Delegates, colleagues, welcome. Please do not hesitate to rename yourself, indicating your delegation or your agency in capitals before your first name, last name. And also if you are PR, DPR or Chargé d'affaires, please also indicate your quality after your name. To do that, you can scroll your cursor over the action bar, the control bar, and then click on Participants. Then you will see your name appearing with the two blue buttons. Click on the second one, which is called More, so click on More, and then you will see a window appearing with Rename. Click on Rename and then you will see you can rename yourself. Thank you. And do not hesitate to use the chat if you have any technical questions.
Good morning, distinguished delegates and colleagues. Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Madame Farima and colleagues from UNOPS. We are two minutes to ten. We're going to give it a little time for delegation. We have forty participants and growing, the list is growing very fast. Distinguished delegates, thank you very much for participating this morning. As you will remember, if you can please place the name tag of your country before your name and surname, that would be very helpful to identify you in the list of speakers. And thank you, Bertrand, and the colleagues that are managing the link for reminding delegations how to rename themselves. So we will be with you in a couple of minutes. It's nine fifty-nine at this point. Over.
Jordi, we're going to start in about, what, three minutes?
That's good, sir. It's one minute past ten, so you want to give it two more minutes? We have fifty-five participants at this point.
I'll give it about three minutes or so.
I will alert you, sir. Madame Farima, you're all right with this? Thank you, madam.
Just before we start, if you want to rename yourself, just put your delegation or your agency in capitals before your name and then your quality after your name. And to do that, scroll your cursor over the control bar, then click on Participants. Then you will see your name appearing with two blue buttons. Click on the second one, which is More, and then you will see a window appearing with Rename approximately in the middle. If you click on Rename, then you will be able to rename yourself. Thank you, and do not hesitate to use the chat if you have any technical questions.
Okay, I think we'll start. Is...
Everybody's here for you, sir. It's eighty-one participants, eighty-two now at this point.
Sorry?
Eighty-one, eighty-two participants now. And Madame Farima is here, or the UNOPS director here.
Importantly, Madame Farima is online and her team.
Absolutely. Good morning.
Morning, Greta, how are you?
I'm fine. It's a good day in Copenhagen.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful to hear you. Okay, colleagues, good morning. I declare I declare open the third virtual meeting of the second regular session for 2020 of the Executive Board of UNDP, UNFPA, UNOPS. Excellencies, distinguished members, colleagues, friends, this morning, we will take up the UNOPS segment of our meeting. Shortly, Ms. Farima, the Executive Director of UNOPS, will deliver her statement to the board. In the course of her statement, Ms. Farima will also provide an update on the UNOPS COVID-19 response and introduce the midterm review of the UNOPS strategic plan for 2018 through '21 and the annual statistical reports on the procurement activities of the United Nations system. Madame Farima is joined on this virtual podium by Mr. Vitaly Van Schelbeun, Assistant Secretary General and Chief and Chief Executive of the UNOPS Sustainable Infrastructure Impact Investment S3I Initiatives, and Mr. James Provano, Councillor and Director of UNOPS New York Office. They are all joined by the UNOPS senior leadership team. I will now give the floor to my friend and the leader of the UNOPS group, Madame Greta Farima. Greta, you have the floor and a very warm welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President, honorable representatives. I'm so sorry that I cannot meet you in person today. I truly miss your personal comments and advice before, during and after these meetings, but I'm glad we can connect virtually the way we are now all too familiar with. I want to start by conveying my condolences to everyone who has been affected by COVID-19, particularly the families, friends and colleagues of all of those who have passed. At UNOPS, we have sadly lost two colleagues. They will forever remain in our memories. In these unprecedented times, I am proud of the dedication and commitment of UNOPS personnel, especially those working in extreme and unpredictable situations to assist nations in their public health response and economic recovery projects. As of today, UNOPS will deliver over $400 million worth of projects addressing the pandemic. These projects are found in over fifty countries and funded by some forty partners, and they include a wide range of services, from emergency response, equipping health workers at the frontline, building temporary health infrastructure, to longer-term support for strengthening national health systems and mitigating the negative socio-economic impacts of the pandemic. Our partnerships range from governments, international finance institutions, to other international organizations and private companies. We also partner with other members of the UN family. I did it different this time. I already distributed my statement, a written statement, eight days ago to you. And in that statement, I provided two examples of our work from Ethiopia and Serbia, funded by the World Bank and EU respectively. I will not repeat the two examples, but rather add new details of what we have done on very short notice with your support. In Brazil, we procured medical equipment for public hospitals and essential food for families. In Indonesia, funded by Korea, we procured oxygen respirators and ventilators. In Jordan, with US funding, we provided critical radiological equipment. In Sri Lanka, funded by Japan, we procured essential medical equipment. In Ukraine, with EU funds, we provided respirators and personal protection equipment to national police. In Paraguay, with funding from the World Bank, we procured fifty ventilators. They were installed and are in operations in hospitals across the country. And in Palau, funded by the India UN Development Partnership Fund through the UN Office for South-South Cooperation, we provided air purifying respirators and were also part of the UN-wide COVID supply chain task force co-chaired by the WHO and the World Food Programme. With fewer resources and mounting needs, we all need to do more with less. And when COVID-19 first hit, countries scrambled to secure supplies. It quickly became clear that procurement processes and supply chains were nowhere near ready for a crisis of this scale. We saw low supplies, high demand and urgent needs. As governments look to build on the lessons learned so far, be reminded that public spending can be a powerful force for change. It accounts for fifteen to thirty percent of GDP in most countries. Government spend has a huge potential to mitigate the economic shock of the pandemic, to create jobs, drive gender equality and reduce carbon emissions. More resilient procurement approaches in the face of future challenges can strengthen supply chains, enhance transparency and fight corruption. Diversifying suppliers can mean businesses owned by women, young people, people with disabilities and ethnic minorities are given the same chance to recover. The approach to public procurement needs to move from transactional to transformational. UNOPS has for years worked hard to support governments achieve their goals and we will continue to step up our efforts. Importantly, we hope to build the capacity of public procurement institutions so that countries continue to reap the benefits in the longer term. And now, we are taking the next step. We have just set out on a new groundbreaking partnership with the government of Mexico and WHO to support the national procurement of medicines. This is UNOPS's biggest public procurement project to date. We are talking of billions of dollars of worth of medicines and medical supplies. Its scale speaks to our commitment to helping governments reap the benefits and realize the potential that can be achieved through improved public procurement. This will be a game changer in Mexico's efforts to improve transparency and value for money. Honorable members, my written statement shared with you last week provides more details about how we worked to help governments fight COVID-19. We expanded already robust partnerships. We were called on, we responded, and together we have made many lives better. But I wanted to also take this opportunity today to reflect on some bigger questions. COVID-19 has impacted every aspect of our lives and left unprecedented damage. It could knock nine trillion dollars off the global economy over the next two years. It has led to the loss of an equivalent of 400 million full-time jobs. Half a billion people could be pushed into poverty. Sixty percent of the children are not getting the education they need because of school closures. Seventy percent of young people had their education disrupted due to the pandemic. Vulnerable groups are disproportionately affected, including women and girls, risking the limited progress made so far on gender equality. The long list of suffering goes on. Yet this is not the time for despair. This is a time to seize opportunities, to build on lessons learned, to improve our infrastructure and supply chains, including for health systems, to be more resilient, to be more able to withstand shocks, to adapt and to scale. We need a recovery that goes hand-in-hand with climate action and gender equality and a recovery that can put us back on the right path to the STGs to create a world that is more equal, inclusive and sustainable. The pandemic has left us with no choice but to drastically change our ways. For those of us fortunate enough to be online, it is said that the pandemic accelerated a change that was already in the air. Remote working has made business continuity possible for many. At UNOPS, we have reaped the benefits of our decisions to move to the cloud, to adopt enterprise technologies, to embrace technological change. What would this more broadly mean for a post-pandemic UN? Our world has fundamentally changed. It has implications for the future of our work. We need to redefine leadership and how it works in a virtual world, adapt our skills and organizational cultures and scale up our technology. We need to be more flexible to address challenges quicker and better. This hits us as the UN turns 75. It is a timely reminder of the importance of cooperation when a crisis hits and why the UN exists. As we reimagine the future we want to see, we must mold a UN that is fit for the purpose. A final point I want to expand on today is gender equality. The pandemic unfolded in a year that marks the 25th anniversary of the adoption of the Beijing Declaration and Platform for Action, a global milestone in the fight for women's rights. The pandemic, as we all know, has had devastating social and economic impacts on women. From exposing them to immense danger, 70% of frontline health and social workers are women, to losing their livelihoods, nearly 60% of women work in the informal economy. They have been hit disproportionately hard. There is the added burden of unpaid care work and worse, there is increased levels of domestic violence and loss of access to sexual and reproductive health services. We all need to put gender equality at the center of recovery efforts. We will help to ensure equal opportunities for women-owned businesses, and we will continue to push for infrastructure that is gender-sensitive. Together with UN Women, we have published new guidance on how to incorporate gender considerations into all aspects of infrastructure projects so that we are one step closer to infrastructure that works for all. The pandemic has also challenged our efforts to achieve gender parity within our workforce. Gender parity remains a key priority for UNOP's. As we speak, women represent 45% of UNOP's personnel irrespective of contract types. So far this year, 56% of our senior appointments have been women. Our 2020 target aim for gender parity, for women to make up 47% of our personnel. As of today, we expect this to be a challenging target to meet by the end of the year. We are currently about 1% behind our target. COVID-19 has led to reduced recruitment levels over the recent months, but we will not lower our ambitions and I will continue my regular updates to the board on this topic of critical importance. In conclusion, Mr. President, as you hear, I have not reiterated my message from the written speech that was distributed already eight days ago. I hope you excuse my approach to the speech today as I wanted to dig deeper into what we did regarding responding to the pandemic and also how we approach public procurement, as well as the challenge of gender equality. And in conclusion, I just want to say we are marking the 75th anniversary of the UN by means of the internet. We gather virtually at a time when we all know that we are in this together. And those words, as hollow as they may sound if used too frequently, will drive both competition and cooperation. And we, the UN, are here to help cooperation prevail. And UNOP stands ready, more determined and stronger than ever before to support the world vision together with our partners of a better world for all. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. President.
I thank Madame Fariño for her very eloquent presentation. And thank you for the way you shaped this and responded, having already circulated your presentation last week, which I thought was quite informative and interesting. I am now going to open the floor for questions or comments by colleagues. And then we, of course, will come back to you for further discussion. Distinguished guests, members, excellencies, the floor is open for comments or questions.
I do have the distinguished representative of Costa Rica, the permanent representative of Costa Rica, sir, followed by the permanent representative of Palau requesting the floor.
Thank you. I give the floor to my dear friend Ambassador Ridggo. Please, you have the floor, sir.
Here, here I am. Thank you very much. Thank you, my dear colleague and friend. It's always so nice to share with you, dear Walton, in all this endeavors in which you are involved. Thank you very much, Madame Executive Director. This is also a shift from a prepared speech in Spanish, which I am turning into English as I go because not only until 10 minutes ago that I discovered that, again, multilingualism is one of the casualties of the current circumstances. But, well, in the name of Costa Rica, I must acknowledge and appreciate the report presented by the distinguished Executive Director of UNOP's, Miss Greta Fariño. And we must congratulate UNOP's for the achievements of the year 2019, achievements which are recognized through positive reports by control organs, by the rendering of concrete results in its projects and especially by its financial, by the financial strength of the organization. It is very important nowadays that such an organization maintains that financial capability, financial strength, which allows it, as it has done, to render services that are absolutely at top world standards in ever more complex projects. In Costa Rica, thank you very much. UNOP's works hand-in-hand with the Ministry of Public Works and with the Institute of Water and Sewage Services. And we have had this relationship through the promotion of, again, public works at the highest standards and highest levels of fulfillment, including one which is very close to my residence in Costa Rica, a bridge in the Lindora pathway, thanks very much. Traffic there was absolutely unbearable before then, and now is not absolutely unbearable, it's just very tough. But thank you very much because the work was finished on those world standards. With all this, of course, the quality of life of the people in Costa Rica has improved. The competitive of the country has raised with this type of public works. And in regards to the very important issue of water, which has been just raised to the level of a constitutional human right in Costa Rica, it is very important, the work or the collaboration that we have had with UNOP's throughout. I like also to point to very significant, significant, significant realization of UNOP's in Costa Rica and Panama in the border section in the Rio Sixahola, Sixahola River, which marks the boundary in both countries with the financial support of, mentioned by the Director, Executive Director, and the overall management of the project have, we have built a bridge to facilitate binational commerce and binational transportation. It is also important, the support that UNOP's has given Costa Rica in the current pandemia, which, by the way, yes, Madame Executive Director, our world has fundamentally changed and we have had to adapt and to innovate. And UNOP's is an example of adaptation and innovation and of supporting countries to do so, as it has. In Costa Rica, I was mentioning that UNOP's has been involved in the diagnosis and elaboration of precisely a project of assuring that the water being consumed in the great metropolitan areas of our country would be a safe provision of water, which will therefore guard that fundamental right of our people. We very much value the operational model of UNOP's as an UN agency, which definitely adds a value to the operation through the participation of very competent staff, which we welcome, whom we congratulate, staff made by both national individuals and international staff. And of course, through the fact that UNOP's in Costa Rica has been able to recover the costs of implementation of those projects without further impinging upon the budget of the organization nor through further collaborations of contributions of member countries. This is, yes, an example of being ready to face difficult times through innovation and through world-high standards. And so we appreciate that the participation of UNOP's in these projects, which are nowadays fundamental in the strategies for sustainability in Costa Rica. We are very pleased to be here with you today and thank you very much, Madame Executive Director, and thank you very much, my dear colleague, President of the Board, Ambassador Webb.
Thank you, Ambassador. Thank you very much, my brother. We now have the Ambassador of Palau. You have the floor, my sister. Excellency, you have the floor, Palau.
Hello, can you hear me, Ambassador?
I can hear you now, yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to figure out how to unmute myself. It was always so good to see everybody. Good to see you. Also, it's good to see the Executive Secretary of UNOP's. I wanted to say, well, excellencies, Mr. President Ali, and good evening from Palau. I made it home. It took me a while to travel home to Palau amidst the pandemic. But I have to say it's good to be able to see everybody again and to join this virtual platform to give this opportunity to address the Executive Board meeting. Palau welcomes the progress made by UNOP's in the biennium 2018-2019. The midterm review reconfirms relevance of the strategic direction and the viability of the demand-driven, self-financed and non-programmatic UNOP's business model. Palau is one of the countries that can speak firsthand about the excellent work of UNOP's. I want to highlight two projects that Palau has partnered with UNOP's on, and one of them is the reason why I took a chance to get over my fear and fly across to come home. But firstly, funded by the India UN Development Partnership Fund and managed by the UN Office of South-South Cooperation, UNOP's has assisted Palau's Ministry of Health to upgrade local community healthcare facilities. The goal of this project is to deliver patient-focused care and improved safe and attractive working conditions for medical staff, both of which are key to efficient and sustainable healthcare systems that support a healthier population. The project is expected to benefit up to 21,522 people, in particular Palau's rural population and people with disabilities. Renovating health centers is not an isolated public health outcome and community engagement is critical in order to ensure local ownership. Let me illustrate this in order to bring health and well-being closer to the people. UNOP's collaborated with two local experts, Lazarina Matuola, a nutrition specialist, and Dr. Ronaldo Raymond Reyes, general practitioner and optometrist. They organized a series of Be Your Own Best Medicine awareness lectures and attended primarily by female citizens and inspired positive lifestyle change by focusing on whole-person health while integrating optimal nutrition exercise and behavioral psychology and tools. Interactive group discussions led by specialists improved participants' knowledge of health and increased their desire to exercise. Secondly, which brings me to the biggest project of which we had embarked with UNOP's on, is the preparation and ability of Palau to become the first small island nation to ever host an international conference, of which many of you know is called the Our Ocean Conference. To be able to do this and complete it in time, of which the date of the conference was to be completed this year, this annual conference needed a venue. And the venue was to have been a platform to mobilize commitment and advance multi-stakeholder partnerships for ocean sustainability. For Palau, preparations to host this conference have been a major undertaking as we did not previously have any venue capable of hosting a conference of this size and magnitude. This is no longer the case. UNOP's has been our main delivery partner in improving public infrastructure for the conference, which has been supported by multiple donors, Japan, India, New Zealand, Australia, Norway and the Nippon Foundation. Despite the disruptions caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, works have been completed in only nine months. Accessibility and sustainability have been built into the design in line with the UNOP's health, safety, social and environmental standards. This has encompassed renovations to the Palau Community College, the Civic Hall, a satellite office of our legislative building, road rehabilitation and improvements in sidewalk access, all in the central part of Coror. These renovations will enhance public infrastructure well after the conference, benefiting not only sectors of society and strengthen Palau's long-term ability to convene important international and regional meetings. I really do hope that each one of you will have the honor to join us virtually as we unveil the Global Village in a completion-handover hybrid virtual and physical ceremony that will take place on the 28th of September this month. This will give us the opportunity and ability to decide whether we can still host a structure. we can still host a structure and format of a conference on Our Ocean Conference, which we delayed slightly to be held 7th and 8th of December. Excellencies, beyond these two projects, Palau's partnerships with UNOPS will continue into the future. Palau has been awarded the IPSA Fund Support for Education Revitalization in support of SDG4 on Quality Education for All, which continues to demonstrate the tangible reality of South-South Cooperation and solidarity. We look forward to starting implementation of this project to upgrade Palau's education facilities. We know that UNOPS will continue to be a reliable partner for Palau. At the same time, Palau is still a small island developing state.
Please.
Okay, thank you. With typical challenges of limited government capacity, UNOPS needs to be able to work with partners to ensure that projects can progress efficiently and flexibility without putting too much burdensome red tape, even while acknowledging due diligence rules and procedures. In conclusion, I am pleased to say that what makes UNOPS an efficient implementer and partner is its holistic approach to development. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, my dear sister and friend. I thank you and sorry that I had to cut you a little short, but we have a list. And we're asking people to not, you know, to take two minutes. And we give a little room, so please, thank you so very much. I will now give the floor to His Excellency, the Permanent Representative of the Gambia. Brother Alamein, you have the floor, please.
Thank you very much, Kaya. I join orders to congratulate you. You have been doing very well on our behalf. And we continue to assure you of our support. Equally, I join orders to thank the Executive Director of UNOPS for the wonderful presentation and for the great initiative taking to position UNOPS to where it is today. We in the Gambia appreciate your support and partnership in the drive to complement our development efforts. Your cooperation with the government in the areas of infrastructure and procurement services, especially the inclusion of women as part of your construction teams, is well appreciated. Infrastructure development is a key aspect of our National Development Plan 2018-2021. And the future roads you are constructing with funding from the European Union will provide easy access to populations in areas where these roads have been constructed. I therefore seize the opportunity to thank you and also the European Union for financing the projects. Moving forward, it is our hope that UNOPS will continue to position itself as a leading partner of the government in the areas of infrastructure and procurement services in the Gambia. It is also our expectation that you will continue to engage more women in your activities by providing them additional social safety nets within the context of the support of the government in responding to COVID-19 as part of a joint UN initiative to provide medical centers in remote parts of the country funded under the UN Secretary-General's multi-partner trust fund is commendable. And we remain hopeful that this will be completed sooner rather than later. As we confirm our commitment to continue partnering with the entire UN country team, we encourage UNOPS to continue to be more engaged with the government and in the country. Once again, Madam Executive Director, we thank you. We thank your country team to continue to be genuine partners of the Gambia. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished Ambassador of the Gambia. And I give the floor to the distinguished Deputy Permanent Representative of Peru. You have the floor, please, Excellency.
Yes, do you hear me, President?
Yes.
Yes.
We're hearing you.
Yes, okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. My delegation would like to thank Madam Executive Director of UNOPS, Greta Fairemo, for her comprehensive presentation of the midterm review of this strategic plan 2018-2021, Annual Statistical Report on UN Procurement, as well as the update on the response to the COVID-19 pandemic for which all efforts must be directed. In regard to the midterm review, Peru is pleased to hear that UNOPS proved the viability of its demand-driven, self-financed business model. Increasing demand for UNOPS services, external review findings, and positive feedback from partners are all encouraging signs that UNOPS is on the right track. As we have mentioned in previous sessions, we are proud to say that Peru is amongst the countries where in close collaboration with the government, most UNOPS projects have been implemented worldwide. Needless to mention, we value its collaboration in many projects ranging from the Ministry of Health to Culture, among many other entities. In regard to procurement, we note with satisfaction that UN system procurement from Peru increased from 85 million in 2018 to 183 million in 2019, giving opportunity for valuable resources to be directed, two priorities in the fight against the pandemic. Much of this can be attributed to increased procurement by UNOPS in Peru, that increased from 17 million in 2018 to 67 millions in 2019. We are pleased with the way UNOPS cooperates with national authorities and the private sector. Finally, as the fight against the pandemic encompasses the majority of Peru's efforts, we commend the work done in collaboration with UNOPS, especially in the procurement of ventilators and personal protective equipment. However, we must also mention there is always a space for improvement and even though positive results are very much welcome in these dire times. UNOPS must strive to keep reducing its average rates throughout effective management and redouble efforts to make gender parity a reality by continuing implementing gender equality policies in the frame of the UN reforms. I thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished Deputy Permanent Representative of Peru. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom and Great Britain. You have the floor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Madam Fairemo, for an extremely informative intervention this morning. And good morning to all colleagues. Madam, Mr. President, as one of the largest donors, partners to UNOPS, the UK remains fully committed to supporting and promoting UNOPS' unique role and mandate within the UN system. UNOPS has become a critical delivery partner for the UK. As just one example, in Sierra Leone, we are working with UNOPS on a rural electrification project, which aims to provide sustainable and low-carbon energy to hundreds of thousands of residents and local businesses. The UK applauds the important role that UNOPS has played in the global response to COVID-19. As Madam Fairemo has described, this has allowed governments and communities to access crucial PPE and medical equipment through its procurement support. Further updates on how UNOPS is responding to the pandemic would be very much appreciated ahead of the first regular session in 2021. UNOPS has, of course, demonstrated an ability to deliver strong project management and technical expertise in varied contexts, including fragile and conflict-affected areas. As we look towards the next strategic plan, we encourage UNOPS to continue to focus on improving value for money and delivering sustainable projects that prioritize the most vulnerable, particularly women and girls. And with this last point in mind and very much welcoming what Madam Fairemo has described in her intervention, the UK would welcome even further detail, perhaps in writing subsequent to this meeting, on the steps that UNOPS is taking to mainstream gender across its program portfolio, including its COVID-19 response. And finally, we would also welcome more information on the Sustainable Infrastructure Impact Investments Initiative, and particularly what plans there are to link it to wider UN work on post-COVID sustainable recovery, including, of course, the Secretary-General's initiative on financing for sustainable development that he launched with the Finance Ministers of Canada and Jamaica earlier this year. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom and Great Britain. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative and member of China. You have the floor, please, China.
Ms. President, the Chinese delegation would like to thank UNOPS Executive Director, Madam Fairemo, for her statement. We appreciate the efforts of UNOPS over the first two years implementing its strategic plan by harnessing its technical expertise in procurement, financial management, and infrastructure. These efforts contribute to help people build a better lives and countries achieve peace and sustainable development. We also recognize UNOPS' active engagement in the reform of UN Development System and its coordination and cooperation with other UN entities. And RC and UN country teams have also been improved. We commend the dedication of UNOPS to assist developing countries in response to COVID-19, including by carrying out emergency response activities, strengthening health system capacity, and supporting socioeconomic recovery. At present, developing countries are shouldering the arduous tasks of eradicating poverty, improving people's livelihood, addressing climate change, and comprehensively promoting sustainable development, while the challenge of insufficient resources remains. In this regard, the Chinese delegation would like to encourage UNOPS to continue working in accordance with the needs and priorities of developing countries and bring into foreplay its comparative advantages for the increased procurement efficiency, improved project management, reduced transaction costs, and enhanced risk management and control. With that, we hope UNOPS will make further contribution to the socioeconomic recovery and the achievement of sustainable development goals in developing countries. Thank you, Ms. President.
I thank the distinguished delegate and member of China. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative, member of Mexico. Mexico, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We thank Mrs. Greta Fairemo, UNOPS Executive Director, for the presentation of her report and wish to congratulate the entire team for the excellent results achieved in Latin America and particularly in Mexico. We are pleased to report that we have been working with UNOPS on strategic projects since February 2019, including on the advising of implementation of the Maya and Train, the Train Maya, to promote the development of the south of the country as well as with the government of Mexico City in the modernization of its public transport. It is also relevant for our delegation to highlight a recent milestone in UNOPS' collaboration to critical projects in our country. This is the case in the agreement signed on the 21st of July between the government of Mexico and UNOPS in a ceremony headed by the President of Mexico, Andrés Manuel López Obrador, which represents a great step in the transformation of the medical procurement system in Mexico. Here, UNOPS will collaborate with the newly-created Institute of Health and Well-being in Savi, helping to satisfy the demand by acquiring the requested medicines. This is the first time in history that Mexico has asked a UN agency for support tenders of this nature and scope for an estimated value of several billions of dollars during a four-year period. Mr. President, the transformation project of the government of Mexico seeks to achieve universal access to health and the entire population, thus breaking the inequity gaps that have affected the most vulnerable populations in recent decades. To achieve this, the INSAVI, UNOPS, and the Plan American Health Organization intend to work together on these acquisitions. Mexico is in a process of transformation, which UNOPS joins to promote fair and equitable public management through joint purchase and open, transparent, and competitive international bidding schemes in order to ensure the best price and quality conditions for Mexico. Our intention is to break with practices and processes that lead to a lot of corruption and shortages in the country. Finally, Mr. President, Mexico recognizes the valuable contribution of UNOPS in an efficient response through emergency purchases to mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Likewise, we thank the organization for the Annual Statistical Report of the United Nations, which shows the role of the UN in this area. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished member from Mexico. And I give the floor to the distinguished member and delegate from the United States of America. U.S., you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Executive Director Fairemo for your statement. The United States recognizes that UNOPS has been an innovation leader among UN agencies to deal with new development challenges in the field and that its self-financing and demand-driven business model is responsible for generating much of this innovative energy. We encourage UNOPS to continue to develop its technical expertise, particularly in upstream development activities, to add value to policy and capacity development through service delivery. We also encourage UNOPS to continue to develop its client-oriented and entrepreneurial culture, as affirmed by the Joint Inspection Unit, to deliver more and better quality services, to continue to improve management oversight tools to ensure they keep up with the increasing demand for services and the new activities that UNOPS will be undertaking. The report outlines the challenges COVID-19 presents to social and economic development. However, the report does not provide insights into how UNOPS may need to adapt or adjust its strategy in the remaining years in the new operating environment, beyond acknowledging that new and alternative sources of development financing will be necessary. Given the pandemic is likely to have an impact on the remainder of the strategic plan period, we will be interested in learning UNOPS' plans to adjust its strategy in the remaining years of its strategic plan and beyond. A quick word on the procurement statistics. We thank UNOPS for compiling the report and welcome UNOPS' commitments to sustainable and collaborative procurement. Finally, as the leading country of supply for UNOPS, the United States and our private sector greatly appreciate our partnership with UNOPS and look forward to continued cooperation in the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished delegate from the United States of America. I do not have...
I have India.
India?
Yeah.
Thank you. We give the floor to the distinguished member from India.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of India at this session. Thank you also to UNOPS Executive Director Fairemo for her very informative remarks, in particular the overview of the UNOPS' response to COVID-19. UNOPS has been at the forefront of COVID response in many countries and has an important role to play through the long-term response and recovery. We particularly appreciate the work of UNOPS during the current COVID crisis in procuring and delivering PPEs, critical laboratory and medical equipment to meet the urgent needs of developing countries. The expertise and excellence of UNOPS are helping member states to advance the 2030 agenda and support the achievement of the Sustainable Development Goals. Part of this effort includes utilizing the right financing instruments and innovative partnerships to create the right environment to realize the 2030 agenda. We welcome the significant progress achieved by UNOPS under the S3I initiative, including the establishment of the S3I Office. We are very pleased that one of the key housing projects under this initiative is being undertaken in Goa, India, by UNOPS through public-private partnerships. S3I recently also signed agreements with the state governments of Maharashtra and Haryana in India, further expanding their portfolio of homes in the country and globally. We are also encouraged to learn that the S3I initiative includes innovation and technology. Technology will only continue to evolve and further expand into our future. And S3I has been a driver of change to empower youth to develop world-changing solutions to global challenges while producing and providing financing and mentoring support to help develop ideas into sustainable businesses. UNOPS is also an important partner for India in implementing projects funded by the India... in implementing projects funded by the India UN Development Partnership Fund for promoting South-South cooperation. Under this fund, many southern-owned and-led, demand-driven and transformational sustainable development projects are being executed by UNOP's with India's funding across the developing world, for instance in Palau, as we just heard. India deeply values this partnership with UNOP's. COVID-19 has underscored the urgency to reinforce and deliver on joint commitments by the international community to achieve the SDGs, including supporting local solutions that enable economic opportunities for all. We request UNOP's to continue to proactively update the executive board, and as members and observers, we look forward to continuing to engage with you on UNOP's and particularly S3I's investment activities in the wake of COVID-19, including on the implications for its financial situation, programmings and operations. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished delegate and member from India for her statement. Do we have any other delegate asking to take the floor?
We do, sir. We have the distinguished permanent representative of Tunisia.
Okay, we will do Tunisia and then we will go back to the table and then we will come back for any further interventions from member states.
After Tunisia, sir, I have the distinguished delegation of the European Union.
Yeah, we will, we will come back after because we have had a few. So we'll give Madame Farima and her team a chance and then we'll come back to the EU.
Okay.
You have the floor, please. Distinguished Permanent Representative, Excellency.
We can hear you now, sir.
I think you are now on.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I promise that I will be very brief. First of all, it is a pleasure for me to take part in this panel concerning UNOP's, which represents both a significant player in the multilateral world and a reliable partner for Tunisia. I would like to thank the BRI for their insightful presentation. We are pleased to share together the midterm review of the UNOP's strategic plan 2018-2021 and the annual statistical report on UN procurement 2019. We also believe that the UNOP's is a key player in these challenging times. Excellency, through its presence in the Security Council for the period 2021, Tunisia defends the idea that international peace and security are significantly linked with sustainable development objectives. In this spirit, the Security Council unanimously adopted the resolution 2532 related to the COVID-19 pandemic proposed by Tunisia and France. This is an international achievement for the international community, which considers that peace and security goes beyond the framework of conventional conflicts. This is also a message from the Security Council: Peace and security are connected with the global well-being. Excellency, Tunisia firmly believes that achieving sustainable development goals represents a common challenge to build a world of peace and to promote a just and prosperous society. Based on this conviction, we consider UNOP's as one of the major actors for achieving these objectives. Indeed, UNOP's has supported Tunisian government in the reforms and program established over the last, the past few years. The reform of justice of health, education and the promotion of ecological and inclusive projects testify the importance of this multi-dimensional partnership. However, this partnership is called to be strengthened for Tunisia and for the North African region to build a more resilient environment in an increasingly unstable and uncertain world. Excellency, we are convinced that UNOP's strategic vision is up to the challenges of today. We are also convinced that UNOP's presents a platform of excellence and success for North Africa, a platform of legitimate aspiration and concrete projects for the region and for the world. And finally, we believe that this partnership will accelerate this decade and it brings us closer to the SDGs 2030. I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank the distinguished ambassador of Tunisia for his statement. We appreciate it, Excellency. Thank you. What we will do now, we will go back and give Madame Farima and/or her team an opportunity to respond to the questions and then we'll come back to see if there are more. We know the European Union and we'll take any other. Adam Fariba, you have the floor for a response, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I will also ask Vitali, our chief executive of our S3I initiative, to give a bit more details regarding that part of the questions that were raised. But first of all, I would like to thank you all for your strong support and it's really heartening to hear the strong support both to what we've done in the COVID-19 response first phase and we will, of course, do our best to ensure that we continue doing our best also in the socio-economic recovery. And of course, UNOP's has been, as part of the UN family, well-plugged into the processes both on the UN reform and the more concrete COVID-19 response and recovery work. And we're also a signatory to the multi-partner trust fund. The midterm review was, for us, an opportunity to revisit our strong intent to both build stronger awareness of what UNOP's could offer. So to be known, recognized and a resource was also about building better knowledge about what we can offer and also to diversify our approach to partners as well as funding. Because looking at the Agenda 2030 requires a lot of bold thinking and initiatives. And so far, I think with the strong support of colleagues all around the world, we have demonstrated our ability to step up and I'm so happy to hear your recognition and support. The COVID-19 actually put a challenge on all of us. We had prepared and updated our business continuity plans and trained them. So I'm also proud to tell you that we, of course, faced some hurdles together with other colleagues in the UN system to get things up and running as quickly as possible, meeting our partners' requests and end users' needs. And as I mentioned, with more than projects in more than 50 countries and close to 40 partners, we have been able to deepen and broaden partnerships that were already existing but also building new ones. And I think our crisis response this time has been stronger, more focused than what UNOP's would have done in many crises earlier. It is, of course, building on a stronger UNOP's, also with stronger financial muscles. But I must say, the continued work over years to ensure quality, to ensure that we have the policies in place and also the opportunity to document and learn from what we have been doing has been important. Knowing that global economy will take a hit from COVID, this diversification in partnerships and funding become even more important. So that is also why we're happy to inform you about the S3I initiative as an important part of our strategic plan. And our midterm review has also been acknowledged by the SG in his financing for development planning and as well now in the COVID-19 socio-economic recovery. So just to respond quickly to what was requested from the UK ambassador, we will, of course, be happy to provide more information about gender mainstreaming of our projects, also about where we stand on the quality infrastructure initiative. We're very proud to say that over the years we have developed a very deep cooperation with Oxford University and practitioners around the world in countries we work. And I think we are stronger than ever in providing solid support in the field of quality infrastructure. That was also part of our interactive dialogue with the board a year ago. Our aim to deliver more value to partners is a continuous focus in our work. So from my earlier distributed speech, you have learned that we have just launched a treasury management system as well as automated our payroll. These are initiatives, building on new technology, that we have high expectations too and where we also, of course, as part of the UN reform, will work with other UN partners in ensuring they understand in full the value we can add to the broader UN family through those initiatives. Our business model, of course, focuses quality delivery. Because it's only happy partners, we can expect to come back. So that's a key driver in what we do. So again, thank you so much and on behalf of my colleagues for the good support that you have offered so far. And to offer a bit more information about the S3I initiative, maybe I can hand over to you, Vitali, to update us a couple of minutes of where we are.
Thank you very much here. Greta, can you hear me now? Excellent. So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Greta. Thank you, distinguished colleagues. I'll be very brief. As you all know, S3I obviously does not exist in a vacuum. It's a part and parcel of what UNOP's is trying to achieve. It has three main goals: affordable housing, renewable energy and health infrastructure. As Greta alluded to, this initiative has been included in the SG's roadmap to the achievement of SDGs and it's also part of the DSG-led Financing for Development Initiative. The biggest involvement of S3I so far has been in the field of affordable housing, where the pipeline now exceeds 1.3 million affordable homes on a number of continents and in at least eight countries. There was also a question asked about health infrastructure and how S3I can be helpful in that field. This is a very new domain for S3I, more so than for UNOP's. UNOP's does have a track record in the past of very successful in interacting in that field. We look forward to structuring jointly with governments and private sector partners a few important deals in the field of health as well. But what I would like to quickly point out is that while we are facing very significant challenges this year in terms of practical implementation on the ground due to multiple lockdowns in so many countries around the world, we also understand very well, and this is shared, this understanding is shared by the governments that we are collaborating with, that once the lockdown issue has been dealt with and the rules of engagement have been altered to the degree where we can actually do some significant construction work on the ground, there is probably no better remedy to the economic crisis that the world is facing than infrastructure investments because it not only builds the highly important infrastructure for the people in need, but it also is known as being the biggest contributor to the job generation and the economic growth, and that applies to both developing and developed economies. And to very quickly illustrate that, we were very encouraged to hear some positive remarks today from the distinguished delegate of India. Indeed, we signed three groundbreaking agreements recently in three states. One relatively small in size, one about middle, and the third one being one of the two largest states in India. And one area where we are completely redesigning all the conceptual work that we did in the past is because in at least one of those states, we're dealing with some of the major slums, some of the biggest slums in the world, and the government of that state and the federal government of India incredibly committed to lifting people out of poverty and giving them a dignified place to live in. And we are confident that we will be able to help them with that. But all the designs that we had in the past in terms of what is affordable and, you know, what is the human right of people in terms of the availability of decent dwellings, you know, those rules are being changed. So we are following the lead of the federal and state governments of India to fully comply with their requirements and we are essentially prepared to go. And I would like to, if you allow me, to encourage the governments of both developed and developing countries to consider participating in our projects, not just as co-implementers, but also financially. Because, you know, the sky is the limit in terms of what can be done by the governments with some small support from UNOP's and S3I. But what we are missing in this big scheme of things is sufficient funding. We do have enough to start this initiative, but if we want to take it to scale quickly enough, then there's just not enough funding that we can possibly get, and the more, the better, and the sooner, the better. And I'll stop here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vitali, and good luck in the project. We will now return to member states and the partners and we will invite the European Union to make their statement. You have the floor, E.
Yes. So, Mr. President, thank you for giving me the floor and thanks to Mrs. Farima for her engaging presentation and also for the excellent collaboration the European Union enjoys with UNOP's as an implementing partner, especially in these times of COVID-19 pandemic, which is the challenge of our lifetime. We have posted the European Union statement on the webpage. Therefore, we will engage here only with a question. But before coming to the question, let me just point to our collaboration in the context of the Team Europe response to COVID-19 in support of partner countries, which reflect an investment to the tune of now 36 billion euros by the European Union and its member states.
UNOPS was identified as implementing partner for the new programme, EU Response to Health and Socioeconomic Impact of COVID-19 in the EGAT region with a volume of 60 million euros. And EGAT is of course the intergovernmental authority on development. And it comprises Chibuti, Ethiopia, Eritrea, Kenya, Somalia, the Sudan, South Sudan and Uganda. And this is just one example. And we have already heard of some others during this meeting. Now, to my question, many have said that the COVID-19 pandemic is also a litmus test for the UN Development System Reform. In that context, we expect more synergies developing between the different parts of the UN system. The fact that UNOPS' business volume with sister agencies has been stagnant, as pointed out by Mrs. Farima in her written statement, while its services have seen increasing demand from other partners, does not quite fit that expectation. We would therefore be interested to learn which steps UNOPS and its sister agencies have taken or intend to take to increase joint action, including with a view to identify possible untapped potential for further efficiency gains, notably in the UN procurement system. Thank you very much.
The distinguished member from the United, from the European Union. And I invite the distinguished representative and member from Sweden, speaking from capital. Sweden, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, for...
We might have lost you a little bit there, Sweden.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President, for giving me the floor. Executive Director Greta Farimod, I would wish to thank you, tack, for your eloquent and informative statement. My remark will be very brief as we would wish to follow up on an issue that Sweden have previously raised in discussions with UNOPS. We were pleased to note in your earlier distributed written statement that UNOPS is engaging with other UN entities, including DCO, on seeking clearer guidance on how to handle the UN coordination levy. We also welcome that UNOPS is facilitating levy payments from donors. As discussed in previous board meetings, we would expect the levy to be applied on all tightly earmarked grants defined by funding partners as contributions and reported to the OECD DUC as such. We would thus be interested to learn more on how UNOPS is charting its way forward in this respect. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished member and representative from Sweden, speaking from Stockholm. Jordi, do we have anybody else?
I don't see any other delegation requesting the floor, sir, at this point, no.
Thank you. I'll ask Mrs. Farima if she can make, respond to those questions, please. Better?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll do my best. And the first one from the representative, distinguished representative from the EU, was about how we both insert ourselves in the UN reform and what thoughts we have about what you refer to as a stagnant development in our partnerships with the UN. If I look at our business over the last few years, we have a very stable portfolio with the UN family. But because we have been growing our partnerships elsewhere, there has been some questions regarding how did that portfolio actually develop? And it has been very stable over the last years. We, of course, do what we can to inform partners, not only within the UN but elsewhere also about what we have to offer. Because you know, our business model is unique. Partners can work with us if they want. And if they don't want to do that, they can walk away. And I'm proud to say that despite a challenging situation for many of my sister organizations within the UN, we have been able to continue working with a number of UN organizations. And I appreciate the cooperation. And I hope it's because they see the value we offer in the cooperation. And you can see that we have a pretty stable cooperation with the secretariat. And this organization that stand out with the most significant growth, I think, is UNHCR. I was happy to take on the challenge from the SG to chair the High Level Committee on Management. And of course, we are now digging more deeply into the future of work challenges for the UN system. And this comes in addition to what has already been identified by the UN SDG as a challenge going forward. We need to reform the UN and the way we work. So how UNOPS is able to offer its expertise in shared services such as procurement, such as I mentioned, treasury management systems, payroll management, will of course be something we will highlight going forward. So both in the capacity of Executive Director of UNOPS and chairing the High Level Committee on Management, I will focus on what the UN system-wide need to ensure to be as cost efficient and effective as possible going forward. And without mixing the roles, also showcase how, as Executive Director of UNOPS, we can plug into that important work. On procurement, of course, from the experience we now gain from the COVID-19 response, we can see both existing and new partners exploring our expertise in the area of procurement. And as I mentioned in my speech today, public procurement is a very significant part of the GDPs on most countries. So how we can support efficient public spend, either through what we already do inside the UN and what we also can do together with governments directly, will have major impact on achieving the SDGs. If we only improve the public spend, as I say, in a more sustainable direction by one or two percent, it may actually outnumber the ODA. On the second question, where are we on the levy? I don't need to repeat myself too much. I hope you see in the written statement that I already distributed that we have made progress. I hope you also appreciate that our position on the levy has been clear all the way. And it's actually due to our business model. Very important that we ensure that we have a clear view and a clear overview of the costs we carry. And we do project implementation for a fee. We run like a private business. We have a very low margin. So we are very mindful of the costs on behalf of end users as well as our partners. And we have to look to the audit requirements that are also quite strict on UNOPS and our business model. The progress we have made lately is linked to when we called for clearer guidelines on the coordination levy. And you know, this does not only apply to UNOPS. We have, in the dialogue with DCO, got the confirmation that there is adjustment of the UN guidance note needed and that it will, of course, address the Resolution 72 to 79, where you as member states set the framework for the levy. So we are looking forward to DCO's leadership in the process of necessary changes to the guidelines in 2021. And we will, in the meantime, facilitate levy payments where it is applicable according to the resolution. And I will, as soon as I can, communicate the outcome of this discussion to you and all member states. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. President. Or maybe I can, as I understand, this was the last intervention. As always, thank you for your leadership, for making this, again, Executive Board, a very good experience for me and my colleagues. And thank you to all who spoke and to all of you for the support that you offer to UNOPS. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madame Farima. Jordi, do we have any further requests?
Not further requests, sir. I don't have any other further requests for the floor. No.
Thank you. But thank you very much, Madame Farima. And this has been, I thought, a very, very refreshing, very good morning. And we appreciate your eloquence and the paper and that you circulated earlier and your overall presentation. My colleagues, excellencies, I inform the board that a draft decision on Agenda Item 15 is being prepared. And we will revert to this item later in our meeting to adopt the decisions. At this point, then, I take it that we will change podium and close this item.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now continue to the joint segment Agenda Item 6, Working Methods of the Executive Board. As you members may recall, at the past last first regular session in February, the Executive Board adopted decisions 2020/2, requesting the secretariat of the Executive Board of UNOPS, UNFPA, UNDP, UNICEF and UN Women to prepare a joint paper with concrete proposals for rearranged annual work plans of the Executive Boards for 2021 with proposed shifts in items along, items among formal sessions which seeks to reduce the workload of the second, excuse me, the workload of the second regular session. Joining me on the virtual podium, first, we have colleagues from the Board Secretariat. We have Jordi Lopat, Secretary of the Executive Board of UNDP, UNFPA and UNOPS. And we have Mr. Samuel Curran, Chief UNFPA Executive Board's Branch. And we have Mr. Dragan Mak, Partnership Advisor, UNOPS New York Liaison Office. I, colleagues, now wish to give the floor to Jordi, Secretary of the UNDP, UNFPA, UNOPS Executive Board, to present the joint paper on behalf of the team. Jordi, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank the distinguished delegates for the attention and the support throughout this conversation on the working, this important conversation on the working methods of not only this board, UNDP, UNFPA, UNOPS, but also the board of UNICEF, UN Women and others. I just wanted to give a little bit of a short presentation just as a memory refresher on where we are with this proposed work plan for 2021. This was a task, next slide, please. This was a task that was requested by the board in the, in previous decisions. And it did request a concrete proposal for a rearranged work plans of all the boards for next year as a kind of a starter of a fresher, new reorganization of the work plans, looking at three main tasks, next, please. The first one was, the objective was to lighten the burden or the amount of work that is coming to the second regular session. And this is in light of the preparatory process of the General Assembly every September. It has been assessed in different iterations of the discussions with member states that the second regular session was, you know, something that the membership would appreciate if it was a little lighter. And so that was the main task that we had ahead of us. The second task was to really look at the harmonization of the agendas of the three New York-based executive boards. And this is something that has been very welcomed by the secretariat and the agencies that these boards are covering. And we have, I think, a very good news that are presented in this paper in terms of the harmonization of the items. And the last one, but not least, and then this is the most important, I would say, is the strengthening of the efficiency, but also managing the maintenance or even the strengthening of the reinforcement of the oversight role of these executive boards vis-à-vis these agencies. And on this, I mean, you've heard distinguished delegates, my interventions before, there was a very important balance to look into, into making sure that efficiencies in the operationalization of the design of the work plans, that not, that's not effectiveness on that aspect, that's not actually a step on the toes of the efficient oversight that the board needs to manage, needs to have to manage these agencies. Next slide, please. So the New York-based funds and programs and entities undertook a thorough consultation process internally with the agency, but also in discussions with the bureau to determine which items could be shifted from the second regular session to either the first regular session. to either the first regular session or the annual session in view of reducing the workload of the second regular session, right? So to this end, this table that I'm showing here, it shows what items have been shifted and where have these items been shifted. And it is in the spirit of transparency and clarification that this has been provided. Next slide. The agencies are proposing to move about fifty percent out of, five of out of eleven of the second regular session items to other formal sessions of the board. And for items that are common or applicable to all the agencies, everything is proposed to be shifted, except for the strategic plans and budgets. This should help to ease the workload of the second regular session. It should be also highlighted that next year, two thousand and twenty-one, is an exceptional year, right? It's for agencies, the four-year cycle of the strategic plans. So the work plan that is presented in this paper is going to be slightly different than the work plan that the membership will see in the following years, because the strategic plans and budgets for the agencies are coming every four years. So one could say that even the second regular session would be lighter in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three than next year, because we have the consideration of the strategic plans at the second regular session in two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide, please. In addition to the respective boards, the secretariats and the membership have assessed the need to continue harmonizing. You know, so this is the important aspect of the harmonization, of the consideration of the common agenda items. So for common agenda items, I mean, we understand that these statutory or mandatory agenda items that appear on the agenda of the executive boards of the funds and programs in this, in this, in New York. So we're talking about the strategic plans, we're talking about the audit reports, the ethic reports, and so on, items that need to be considered at the same time across the boards to facilitate oversight and strengthen harmonization. So with the relevant documentation appearing always at the same time, we understand that it would be welcomed by membership to be able to have, you know, a clearer, cross-cutting, bird's-eye perspective, I would say, on what is being discussed in the different, in the different boards. So harmonization in this context is having the common agenda items at the same time in all the boards. So that is an important disclaimer. In preparing the proposed work plans for two thousand and twenty-one, the secretariats have also looked at the common agenda items with the aim of achieving full harmonization. So this table that we are basically showing you in the next slides are basically kind of, the table that we are very proud of showing is because it shows that we have fully harmonized sixteen out of the sixteen agenda items that are common to all the boards. So with this note, I just wanted to make sure that I give you this presentation and refresher. The secretariat stands ready to answer any questions that delegations may have. This is over, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jordi. I will now, I will now open the floor for any comment or questions to Jordi or the team.
I do have a request on the distinguished delegate of the US, sir.
Yes, please, the United States of America, you have the floor, please. We cannot hear you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you very much to Jordi for the presentation. Just a couple of comments. The United States very much appreciates the work, time, and consideration that has gone into this report. And it is clear by the proposed work plans for two thousand and twenty-one that there are efficiencies to be gained through harmonization without sacrificing too much in the way of substance. We did want to flag, however, that the United States is concerned that the shift of agenda items out of the second regular session may result in a concurrent reduction in oversight and reduced visibility on programmatic activities. While we support the proposed two thousand and twenty-one work plan for the UNDP, UNFPA, and UNOPS Executive Board, we would like to stress the need to reserve the option to revisit it based on the board's experiences in implementing the proposed work plan in two thousand and twenty-one. We'd also like to take this opportunity to reiterate, as we've stressed in the past, that the United States places significant importance on the need for three annual sessions for each of the boards to preserve the effective execution of the board's oversight function. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished delegate from the United States. Do we have any further member asking for the floor?
I do not have any other indications, sir.
I thank, then, I thank the members of the secretariat for their presentation. And do you want to respond, Jordi, or team, to the United States before I move on?
If I may, Mr. President, just very briefly to thank the distinguished delegation of the US for taking the floor, taking the time, and taking the attention that this important conversation merits and to express the appreciation of the secretariat, not only to the US delegation, but also to all the members of the board and observer delegations that have been very actively engaged in this. And just to reassure the US delegation that from the perspective of this board, we and others, but we have always make a very important point at maintaining the full oversight of the membership vis-à-vis the agencies that this board covers, UNDP, UNFPA, and UNOPS, and that there's never been a question that the three sessions were something that the membership in this board was absolutely committed to continue having. The conversation, I think, it started in this iteration of this conversation on working methods, started in two thousand and seventeen. We're looking forward to continue having the discussion. I think it is important to continue keeping an eye on the working methods. It's not something that closes, you know, and it gets locked and written in a stone. That shows the dynamism of this board and the operational nature of this board, that it's meant to continue looking at the efficient and effective management of board meetings and providing the space for member states to deliver its oversight and strategic advice to the agencies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Distinguished delegates, excellencies. To take action on this, I want to inform the board that a draft decision on Agenda Item six is being prepared. And we will revert to this item later to adopt the decision. So I thank you for your participation. And I thank Jordi and his team for the work and presenting the, presenting, sharing the information. Thank you. We'll now change podium again. And we will now proceed to Agenda Item sixteen, Other Matters. Under this, we get an address by the Chairperson of the UNDP, UNFPA, UNOPS, UN Women Staff Council. Let me take this opportunity and introduce Ms. Vanessa Marokovic, Chair of the Staff Council. Vanessa is joined on the podium by Ms. Angelique Crumley, UNDP Assistant Administrator and the Director of Bureau for Management Services. Further, she is joined by Ms. Josephine Mumfi, Director of the Division of Human Resources, UNFPA. And further, Ms. Marianne Romaine, who is the Chief Financial Officer and the Director of Administration for UNOPS.
Sir, may I inform the board and you, there has been a change in the podium. And from the UNOPS, we do have the honor of having Ms. Tina Fries Hansen, Director of People and Change Group at UNOPS, sir.
Hansen, you said?
Yeah, Tina Hansen.
Tina Hansen, welcome, and my apologies. I did not get that information at this time in my written notes, but we welcome you. I would like to give the floor to Ms. Deso Vic to make a statement on behalf of the group. And then we will open the floor for discussions. Madame, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Executive Board, dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to address you today as the Chair of the UNDP, UNFPA, UNOPS, and UN Women Staff Council. Please allow me to start by expressing my deepest sympathy and condolences to the colleagues and families that have lost their loved ones as a result of COVID-nineteen pandemics. Thank you. This council, together with about eighty country and regional level staff associations, is fully committed to a strong UNDP, UNFPA, UNOPS, and UN Women and to the well-being of the all-personnel staff and non-staff. Two thousand and twenty was and continues to be a very difficult year. Each one of us shared the struggles of the new reality that the COVID-nineteen pandemics has brought. The sense of belonging to one UN and the need to jointly respond to the unprecedented situation caused by COVID-nineteen pandemic has brought our senior management and the staff representatives together to act in unison for the well-being of all. We successfully challenged the challenges of the pandemics, coupled with the natural and man-made disasters we were faced with. To us, our response demonstrated our capacity to do remarkable joint work together to meet personal needs and strengthen our commitment to support the growth of strong, safe, and stable organizations. The number of global town halls and other COVID-response-related meetings and staff increased as needed to meet demand, and this has strengthened our dialogue immensely. Mr. President, I wish to express our appreciation and gratitude to the senior management of UNDPA, UNDP, UNFPA, and UNOPS for timely and sensitive response to the COVID-nineteen crisis and for making personnel's well-being the priority. UNDP, UNFPA, and UNOPS, rich and unique dedicated human capital, showed exceptional professionalism and dedication, and the agency's delivery in this difficult time is remarkable. Everyone participates to help the process of balancing the expectations to deliver by addressing the new social, organizational, and individual challenges. The process is clearly showing that no one size fits all and that the responses need to be adequate to the needs. We are successfully implementing the Agenda two thousand and thirty by recovering at the same time. However, every office and each person are deeply affected by the situation. Individuals' psychological flexibility is being seriously challenged. The stress and the uncertainty have increased risk and the number of mental health issues and cases is rising. Telecommuting and teleworking were new and challenging ways of working for many. We moved to remote working within a short period of time, and colleagues show an appreciation that they could continue working despite struggles to balance their commitments to their work and their families. The organizations provide counseling and similar support to the personnel as many experienced difficulties of working in isolation, depression, suicidal thoughts, feeling isolated, losing sleep are only some of the emotions colleagues expressed. Domestic violence increased. Even though, for example, the PALS survey conducted in New York City showed that colleagues feel safe, felt safe, sorry, and privileged during the first month of the New York, in New York City, and they acknowledged the management's efforts to minimize the impact, the majority expressed their fears about the future. Further actions to mitigate negative effects and to eliminate sources of stress are needed to reach an optimal solution for the organizations and personal trust in the future and must include addressing the following. Building truly inclusive workplace requires a long-term approach and is everyone's responsibility. We pride ourselves of the diversity of our workplace, but we have not lived up to the principles of the UN Charter. Year two thousand and two talks about diversity respectfully included the Secretary's general recognition of existence of racism in the UN and call for an action. This will not be addressed by short-term fixes, but culture change and no one should fear retaliation for speaking up. The importance of skilled leadership at all levels, able to lead and deal with the situation and to support individuals and teams remains. We welcome the seniors' management's of three agencies' commitment to changing culture to assure dignity and respect for all. This should also address the negative perception of the recruitment processes, which are often described by the personnel as not providing equal opportunities to all. The other thing is harmonization of contract modalities in the UN and in our agencies' use. We represent staff and personnel from the three agencies, UN Women and UNICEF Federation, and we share staff unions' concerns about lack of one-un approach in staff and personal contracts. COVID-nineteen represents an unprecedented humanitarian crisis. We are witnessing a very successful one-un response to the crisis. And at the same time, the challenges in applying the principles of duty of care to all, staff and non-staff, all of which need to be taken care of. We recognize the challenges of attracting and retaining talent when there is a persistent imbalance of core and non-core resources. And we are fully aware of the specifics of each of the agencies. However, we would like to reinforce our earlier statement that retaining talent will be possible if they are offered the contractual modality which will motivate them to join, remain, participate fully, and feel safe in the organization. Member states and United Nations need to lead by example and should advocate for equal job opportunities, achieving of which we will appreciate the board's support. The differences between national and international staff, staff and non-staff, contractual modalities, entitlements, and benefits of the various categories during the crisis and the fears caused by lack of job security grow. Fear for the future, as expressed by our colleagues, is directly linked to their contracts and a force in future that for many will mean not after-work entitlements and benefits. There are also justifiable concerns about the future of the UN Pension Fund. Moving forward, we urge for harmonization of contract modalities in UN and in our agencies and a unified approach in respect to ICSC modalities, which will also support inter-agency mobility. We should start with offering continuing appointment and longer FTA contracts. The next thing is recognizing performance and promotion. Personnel works hard remotely, sometimes without electricity and access to internet. The challenges of new ways of working imposed by the crisis effectively expose the hierarchy of individual needs.
Thomas, this is Jordi, Secretary of the Board. Who are you?
Jordi? Sorry, I'm hearing Jordi.
I'm on mute. You, please carry on.
A need for belonging. At this time of the challenges in working remotely and often in isolation becomes more important for many colleagues. We all know that recognition is the greatest motivation and that it results in self-actualization and deepening sense of responsibility and creativity. It often costs nothing. We are still to reevaluate how we recognize our personnel to inspire performance and retain top talent. We welcome UNOPS initiative in this regard, and we are looking forward to hearing more about the impacts it had. The next thing is, and the last one before I conclude, is revise restructuring processes. The council respects the need for organizational changes, and we recognize that the organizations have responded creatively in fast-changing operational and program context. However, there is a persistent perception of lack of fairness and experiences of too many organizational changes in the organizations. We are very concerned by the restructuring processes, some of which were based on pre-crisis assessment and plans taking place in the middle of the crisis. taking place in the middle of the crisis. Several ongoing restructuring processes in our agencies amplify colleagues' fears for the future. We would like to raise our voice and ask for some of these processes to be put on hold, slowed down, or revised until we are back to conditions of normalcy or back to normal. And staff association must remain fully involved in all those processes at all levels. To conclude, the pandemics has changed the ways we work and will affect all us for a long time going forward. We must all recognize the concerns and fears about the future of the organization, and we would like to remind all that the best way to predict your future is to create it. As we are returning or or we are planning to return to office, we shall bring together our good pre-COVID and newly gained practices. We thank to each member member of constituency for helping to imagine and develop the new way of working. Post-pandemic programs are bound to change and increase and will directly affect personnel. Looking ahead, we are looking for your support to personal living, including by providing adequate and flexible funding to meet those needs. Mr. President, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to address the Executive Board, and I'm looking forward to feedback and comments. Thank you.
I thank Ms. Desovik for her very interesting and informative statement or presentation. I will open the floor now for members to share any comments or ask questions, et cetera. The floor is open, colleagues.
I do not have requests for the floor, sir.
Thank you. I thought it was myself a very interesting presentation, and there were some very important comments raised. And I think the dialogue on this is very helpful to the board. I want to assure you that the information you shared is very useful and very helpful, and the board is always, the bureau is always there and willing to listen and to be and to share your thoughts with you and to be very engaged in anything that you do. Thank you for the presentation, and we will move forward. Colleagues, we have come then to the end, to the conclusion with quite a bit of time, the conclusion of the morning session. The time, however, gives us gives us for the rest of the day an opportunity to to continue the informants and consultations on draft decisions. And we will, we will reconvene tomorrow morning, Wednesday, at ten o'clock. I think the morning meeting was quite informative. We were well ahead of time, so it meant that people were quite satisfied and engaged in the activities. If there are no further comment or questions from any member of the board, I bring the morning sessions to a close. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, delegates. We will reconvene at one for informal consultations on draft decisions.
Thank you.